Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I'd like to call to order the November 1st, 2022, City Council Meeting. Please call the roll. Garza?
Here.
Fast?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Pyros State Carvalho?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning's prayer will be given by Darrell Peterson. Thank you Pastor.
And good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly and most gracious Father, we just thank you for the opportunity that we come before you before the meeting even really gets started. We thank you, Lord God, for the wisdom that you have, but Father, we just thank you that our hearts cry that, Father, we learned how to run this city, to make decisions, to call things that be not as oh they be. And Father, we just thank you that this city shall grow, become what it's supposed to be. Because I know, Lord God, I know many people that are working within the city. They're trying to make this the better city, something nicer, something whatever. And I thank you for the privilege that, Father, we can pray. I thank you for the leadership. I thank you, Lord God, for so many things. And Father, I thank you. So many people just grumble and gripe, but Father, I just praise you to know that, Father, we're on the right track in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the period of the meeting where we allow people in the audience to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We do ask that you approach the podium, state your name and ZIP code, and try to limit your remarks to about five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council?
Good morning. I'm David Foster, ZIP code 67502. And not only am I a new resident here in Hutchinson, I'm also the director of the YMCA. And just wanted to come and just give you a brief update on the Y, as most of you may or may not know. We became part of the Greater Wichita YMCA a couple of months ago, most recently officially at the end of last month, which is very exciting. And it's really good for Hutchinson because not only does that give us a lot of resources and things like that for training staff and different things like that, it also really helps us meet our mission, which is to put Christian principles into practice through programs that build healthy spirit, mind, and body for all, regardless of the ability to pay. So that's a way that we can really be a resource for residents and people in the community that no one should ever be turned away from the Y either for membership or programs and free community services that we offer based on their financial situations. That's very exciting. It's something that we're very proud of and want to make sure that we uphold and continue that mission here in Hutchinson and Reno County as well. And secondly, we have inherited, I guess you would say, a facility that's a little bit older and had some deferred maintenance is probably a nice way to put that. But we do have an older facility. But we really love the location that we're in, being that close to the high school and all that affords us in the community and obviously the college and just sort of being in that central area of Hutchinson that I'm learning about with the cosmosphere and all that good stuff. But anyway, that does provide some challenges for us a little bit on kind of what our future plans are. Do we retrofit and renovate? Do we expand? We've got a lot of moving parts. We don't have any specific plans right now, but I did want to let you know that is something that we are looking at. Because if you've been to any of our other YMCA's in Wichita, the facilities, not only are the facilities nice, but those facilities allow us to meet the needs, like I mentioned before, about offering free programs and free services to the community and being a resource, not just at the Y but in the community. But been really excited so far. Been able to partner with a lot of community agencies. Tony with Hutch Rec, Lance at the Boys and Girls Club, Chief Hooper has been instrumental in helping support our Saturday Night at the Y, which is a free middle school program for any middle schooler, Y member or not. We open the Y one Saturday a month, the second Saturday, from 6:00 to 9:00. So after we close, those middle school students can come to the Y, have a safe place, a good environment to do all the things that they wouldn't maybe otherwise be able to do. We had our first one of the school year in October, and we had 138 students there. 126 of them were not members of the Y, so that's a great outreach, I think, for us. But anyway, more than anything, just wanted to come and kind of introduce myself. And I've got to connect with a couple of you personally so far and really enjoyed that, but just excited to be here in Hutchinson and represent the YMCA.
Yeah, well, we are excited to have you and thank you for coming this morning and for all you're doing to really bring up that facility. I'm glad to see you. You moved to town. That's fantastic. And does anyone on the council have questions of David or what the Y's plans are?
Yeah, David, do you plan to keep the athletic part of it?
You know, as of now, we do, but that's always, we're always looking at other ways that we can partner with other agencies and things of that nature. So there may be some things that, again, we're looking more to fill some gaps in the community. One being probably, I know there's an early childhood gap, that zero to pre-K, and we've got some history and some facilities in Wichita that, we call them early learning centers, that kind of help fill those gaps, not only in the community but on school campuses and things like that. But as of now, we're evaluating everything that we do, especially from a, not only from a financial standpoint, but also a serving the community standpoint. And, you know, we're always looking at if there's things that other agencies we can partner with or maybe doing a little bit better or not really going in and duplicating a lot of services. And we're always open to looking at that as well.
David, I appreciate getting to know you and I appreciate your collaboration with the different people that you've collaborated with. I see you've got Shane with you. I assume he's the right-hand man locally?
Yes, sir. Shane's our current board chair at the YMCA. Shane Dewey is a great resource.
I did that on purpose because I know you well, Shane. So anyway, no, thanks for what you're doing. And I look forward to seeing possibly those pictures that I saw maybe come to fruition.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, a lot of moving parts right now, but we're just kind of seeing what all of our options are and being open to any and all potential collaborations with other agencies too, even in a new facility, which I think would be something that could be a neat resource and maybe something that's thinking a little bit outside the box too.
Well, welcome to Hutchinson.
Thank you. Good to be here.
I'm interested in seeing some of those. But thank you for coming to him.
Absolutely, yeah, anytime.
It's just really exciting to know that potentially we could have a greater facility at the YMCA. I've always enjoyed doing sports with my kids there.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for having me.
One other thing I wanted to make you aware of, I think on, is it December 6th that the Early Childhood Group is going to be presenting at the council, the recommendations of the market study?
I believe so.
I would just encourage you to tune into that. I don't know if you were part of one of the focus groups?
Yeah, we're attending a Zoom on that, I think, on Monday, next Monday and stuff. So yeah.
Yeah.
But definitely are interested in finding out more about that and seeing if there's a way we can collaborate or be a part of that initiative.
Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thanks again for having me. You guys have a good day.
You too.
You bet.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? It's going easy on us today. All right, hearing none. Next item, please.
Item five, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or comments on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. Please call the roll. Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros State Carvalho? Yes. Next item, please.
Item six A, consider request to rezone property at 1619 East 30th.
Good morning, council. Jim Saitnader, interim planning and development director. Here this morning to bring to you a recommendation from the planning commission to rezone. The case number is CA 22-00002, a request to rezone 1619 East 30th Street, which is now Zoned C2 Commercial District to CR Commercial Residential District. The applicant, Mr. Darren Thomas, is here in the audience, and the property owner is James Strong. The recommendation of the planning commission is to accept and approve the request to rezone this property based on the consideration of the following factors: the character of the neighborhood, which is trending commercial but still has a large number of residences; uses of the nearby properties, which are both commercial and residential. I probably ought to give you some pictures here, sorry. So there's the location of the property, which is on the south side of 30th Street, close to the Waldron intersection. And there's the aerial map. And the future land use matches this request. The impact on nearby properties we see as none. The length of time the property has remained vacant is, to our knowledge, it has never been developed. So it's been an empty track since I looked back. I think it was platted in 1969 or something like that. So if there has been something there, it's been a long time. The gain to the public health, safety, and welfare compared to if this application was denied, we don't see any impact one way or the other. Availability of public utilities to serve the development, yes. Confirmation of the comprehensive plan is also yes. And then the recommendation from Matt Williams of PEC and the staff is approve this request. The planning commission met and approved on October 11th by a vote of five to zero to rezone 1619 East 30th from the current C2 zoning to CR and recommend that city council accept and approve this zoning amendment request. This action is what's called spot zoning, which is normally something the commission took very seriously from the get-go. Got several calls early on asking why. And the reason to do that, we felt, was the best and quickest action to allow the drive-through, which is critical to this business, which isn't allowed in a C2. And then it was very important to the planning commission that we then start to work with the remaining residents of that area and talk to them about what might be best for them. We think the CR covers both commercial and residence as fairly as possible. And if you look at the development basically around Waldron and to the east, has been much greater than from Waldron to the west, or excuse me, I've just said that backwards. The idea of CR started years back when K61 was rerouted. And so the hope was to build a large commercial district from the highway on into town. And there has been some success, especially around Waldron intersection to that. For the most part, it's remained mostly residential. When you get to Waldron and work west to the GVI ditch, it's kind of been the opposite. There's a lot more commercial businesses in that area, but there's still a significant number of residents. So the planning commission, who do not like to do spot zoning, agreed that this is what we should do at this particular case, but we should work to rectify the rest of the area. They had a public hearing, which we advertised and was held on October 11th. The staff recommended approval of this request after the evaluation from PEC, and we received no comments at that public hearing. So I would ask that you approve and accept this rezone application.
Jim, I had just a few questions. First off, this is exciting. I've had a lot of comments about this particular type of business. So how fun that this is coming and that we're going to have development of an area that's never been developed. But I guess I was under the impression that entire corridor was CR. Was that changed when we did the comp plan in 2017?
Well, that's, the future land use is for that to be, but individual properties have not been rezoned. So we need to take kind of an overall staff-directed project to get that done. But that would take working with a whole lot of the property owners.
I see.
And because of the time crunch, we would have much rather done it that way as a big chunk, but we just didn't think we could be fair to Mr. Thomas's timeline. And so, and he is here to answer any questions also.
Well, I appreciate your willingness and eagerness to expedite it in any way. The other question I had is, on the C2, can we affect those designations, like whether or not a drive-through is allowed in C2? Can we change that? I mean, why wouldn't a drive-through be allowed in C2? That's so arbitrary.
Yeah. A lot has to do with the stacking. I mean, there's a lot of issues of why you don't and do, but that's what we'll start to look at with things like, we've already talked about chickens, solar panels, and that may be one of our text amendment changes that we would propose early next year. So.
And then Scooters just east of Waldron does have a drive-through?
They do, but it was CR.
Okay, that's why I was confused by all this. It's literally like two parcels east.
Right.
Okay. Okay, no, that clarifies. Thank you.
Yeah, like I say, from the highway back to Waldron was done as a CR zone, and that goes back probably 15, 20 years. And the effect of it has been positive. There's a number of commercial things, but not to the degree that it's developed from Waldron west to the GVI ditch.
So if we wanted a larger rezone west of Waldron, would the residents in that area need to sign off on that? Is that what has been the holdup? Because it's clear that it has facilitated development, commercial development.
Yeah, it's just never been roached as far as I know. But it's probably time that, you know, we do that. So, and in a perfect world, we would have done that as part of this project. But because of the time it will take and the meetings, we'll probably have a public meeting or two to get the folks together. So.
Okay. Well, we certainly want to be respectful of any residencies in that area, since it's in such a flux.
Yeah, absolutely. And the beauty of the CR is it protects both residential and commercial. So if someone has lived there for a long, long time, they don't have the impact of being a non-conforming property in a commercial district, or a lot of times they're in industrial districts, which really cause a lot of issues when they try to sell or if they have an insurance claim or things like that. So it's really important that we get that zoning right for everybody.
So spot zoning, this particular parcel, wouldn't impact the residents further west? Because there's another business right next to that, right?
It is a resident, here, let me show you. I'm not doing a good job here. That's the layout of the property and what the drive-through, the stacking, see the cars coming around, how that will work. And then the property facing south. And then facing north is the subway. East of the subject property is a house. And west of the subject property is a house.
But those aren't impacted by the spot zone?
They would be except for we put, no, they won't be impacted by the zoning itself. We've asked for some buffering and some things like that to make the transition between a commercial business and the residence more subtle.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council? Or would you like to hear from the applicant himself?
Yes.
If, and I'm sure you guys have already discussed this with the spot zoning and the future for that to be served, is there any kind of negative impact by switching it from the C2 to CR for anybody in that area?
Not at this point. There will have been in the C2 zoning already. We think it will be a help in the future because it breaks it down to where the residence has their components and the commercial has their components.
Which is probably why it was in that future plan.
Yeah, we think it should be done.
Should have already be done.
Should have already been done. But, you know, hindsight's always money. And at the time, with the highway realignment and all that, there was thought of a lot, which has definitely happened, you know, Prairie Star wasn't there, and then they're there now. And so it's, we all believe, the planning commission, PEC, and staff believe that area should be rezoned to CR.
And are you guys planning on starting that?
Yes.
Is there a timeline for that?
Well, it'll probably, with the size of our staff and things right now, it'll probably start beginning of next year would be my guess. Yeah. But we'll definitely want to, and I know the planning commissioners who made that statement, will make sure we keep moving forward with that.
Thank you.
And Steve, did you say you did want to hear from the applicant?
No, she got my question answered right there.
You really ought to hear Mr. Thomas.
All right, yeah, Mr. Thomas, since you came. We'd love to hear about your new business.
So Darren Thomas, 67502. Really excited for this opportunity for Hutchinson. HTO is a great franchise, and it allows for me to provide about 20 or 30 part-time jobs seasonally to some Hutchinson residents. And with that, I look forward to some professional development for the future workforce of Hutchinson. We will have a few full-time employees we'll be able to employ. And if you guys have ever been to HTO, it's kind of like a frozen yogurt slash Starbucks, but in the form of iced tea. You walk in, you sample the teas, there's 25 flavors all the time, and then some seasonal flavors. We'll also have some ice and water that's available for the residents here in Hutch. And then we'll also have a small retail side. We'll have some Yeti coolers and some Arctic and some things that you can come in and get your tumblers if you want to take your tea for the long time. We'll also be able to provide the gallons and provide some catering and things, maybe in the future, to supply some events and things for here in Hutch. My wife and I moved here last April with our two kids, and we've been looking for ways to give back to the community. We do have a clothing store here in town called Addy Russ Clothing, and that's what we do right now. But as we look for the future of Hutchinson, we saw an opportunity to be able to give back and provide a place for people to just be developed in a way that can be beneficial for Hutchinson in the future. So that's what we're looking at with this store. You saw the site plan up there. We have redesigned it a little bit and allowed to get about 20 cars in the drive-through stack in the newest site plan, which we've been continuing to develop. And so with the center turn lane at that location, it allows for not much impact on the traffic flow either. And so we think it really is an ideal location for Hutchinson. You can get off the freeway, get back on, run into Dylan's, grab a drink, and just kind of find a place to refresh and just make your day a little bit better with some iced tea. So.
I love sweet tea.
Do you? We'll have sweet and unsweet, and so multiple flavors.
I like peach tea, sweet peach tea.
Okay. Have you been to the one up in Wichita yet?
No, I haven't. But that's my favorite. So I'm actually really excited.
Well, if approved today, can you walk us through the timeline of opening?
So if approved today, we're currently drawing plans for the location now. We'll go to GC bids when the architectural plans are complete in about a month, with the hopes of being open in May.
Oh, perfect time.
Of next year. So that's the timeline we're pushing for as long as construction goes well and the winter's nice to us. So.
Great. Well, thank you so much. And thanks for your interest in investing in Hutch.
With that, I'd make the motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the request rezone of 1619 East 30th Avenue from C2 Commercial District to CR Commercial Residential District based upon due consideration of the factors shown, adopt an ordinance for publication, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there further comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, please call the roll. Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros State Carvalho? Yes. Next item, please.
Continue.
Thanks, Jim.
Item 6B, consider ordinance allowing for the assessment of collection costs.
Good morning, council. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I also have with me Nicole Martinez. She's our utility billing manager. I'd like to provide you kind of a timeline of how we bill and collect on those bills. We bill after the fact. We go read your meter, then we create a bill, then you have 20 days to pay that bill before it's past due. Then you have 21 days after that before we would disconnect you for non-payment. So during this process, you can have two monthly bills before we would close out your account for non-payment. We do try to work with customers by offering them pay arrangements, extended times to pay, and providing resources where they can get help, such as churches or DCF or KIRA. If we don't receive responses from this, we then send them a letter that we're about to turn over their debt to the Kansas Setoff Program. That is what we use to collect debt currently. The Kansas Setoff Program garnishes tax returns, lottery winnings, and sometimes payroll if you're paid by the state. They then charge us a 19% to 24% fee that we have to eat. We won't collect that, but we do have to show that they paid that percent. So to give you an idea of what So to give you an idea of what we collect using Set Off, we sent three hundred and thirty-one thousand between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one. Of that debt to date, we've collected forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So that's an idea of how we're collecting with that. If we decided to use a collection agency, that could only go up because the collection agency would use the state Set Off Program as well and would submit our debt to state Set Off. The advantages of using a collection agency, there's multiple. They would still submit to Set Off, but they would be able to use other methods of attempting to collect as well. Phone calls, letters, and if it gets to a certain point, they would be able to submit a claim in court and garnish wages, which we would hope that they would be able to pay before then. The advantage of using a collection agency as well is by state statute, we would then be able to assess the fee of collections to the customer. We would not have to eat or expense that cost. So we can kind of control things with, if we're used to BK. They also provide services to municipal courts. So another advantage there is that we could, we may have light customers and be able to use, to share that information to further collect. But we can control things. If we don't want to send stormwater-only fees to collections, we could not send those. We can kind of control the timeline. We would still allow sixty days before we would send it to CBK. They would try to collect it for forty-five days before they would turn it over to their law firm, who would have that debt for forty-five days before they would further go to court to try to garnish. So today you have before you an ordinance. We would need to pass that ordinance to be able to pass the cost on to the customer. So any debt incurred after you pass the ordinance, we could assess the collection cost to. Any debt before, we can't. So that is why it's important to pass the ordinance if we do intend to pass the collection fee, to pass that ordinance as fast as, or as soon as we can. So with that, are there any questions you have about the process?
Well, Angela is looking at the list of clients and it looks like they're already serving about a hundred and twenty-three municipalities in Kansas. Is that on the collection side or other services?
Collection side.
Well, this is a little bit unrelated, but what is our process of working with people prior to sending?
We do try to offer them pay agreements, give them extensions of time. We refer them to churches, DCF, KIRA, as long as those programs are still available. We do try to notify them in multiple ways before they're disconnected. We do robo-calls, texts and emails to let them know they're about to be disconnected. Once they are disconnected, there's a tag on the door and that's really a sign that you need to call us. And we try to work with them too as well after the fact, but.
So I think you gave us the numbers, but as a percentage, what would you say as a percentage of utility customers or residents, how many go to collection?
How many go to collection? Do you have a good answer for that?
Is it pretty small?
I would say every month we send less than a hundred accounts to Set Off, just looking at the reports I was pulling. And some of those are stormwater fees, so.
Okay, so it's not like they're all people who won't be able to get utilities in their next home? Because you can't if you have that.
Yes, and we try to work with people if they come in and they have a debt that's at Set Off. We try to get them to pay at least half of the debt upfront before they move in, but also giving them those resources because some of those churches and programs will help them to get them water now and will help them pay that past due debt.
Okay, thank you. Well, I certainly defer to your expertise on what the most efficient method is for collection. I definitely want to make it more efficient for the city. That's just always a concern of mine, you know, that we have people out there who don't have water, but I'm not saying that that's the city's responsibility to fix, but anything we can do to work with those individuals who are struggling would be good. Questions or comments from the council on this proposal?
How much flexibility do we have if we outsource this on how we work with people? Or is it pretty much out of our hands?
No, you can recall the accounts.
Yeah, we can do that. They also said they're willing to do things like we'll waive late fees if you can pay your debt now so that they don't have to go to court. So we have some options like that, like where we could give CBK the authority when they call these customers to say, we'll waive your late fees if you pay the debt now and try to work with them.
I'm curious if most clients are understanding or if they're difficult and if this would, if they would be a buffer working with people that may not be pleasant to work with.
I'm sure they could be. Yeah, and we're really not trying to go after those that are struggling and willing to come to us. We're trying to go after those people that are just skipping town without paying their bills.
Well, it seems like this outsourced method has other means of collection that we don't currently use.
Correct.
So they have more tools to try to collect.
Can't bleed a turnip.
I understand.
Can't bleed a turnip.
But that's.
Yeah, I know it's an unrelated issue, just. We're not going to solve poverty in this particular meeting, on this particular agenda item, it's just.
I think it's going to raise our, getting more of our funds back so that we can, I mean, if you think about everybody that ditches out on their bill and doesn't pay it, somebody's got to pay it, a taxpayer. So for me, if we can utilize and get more tools in order to recover some of our funds, I think I'd be interested to get a report in a year to see how it's going.
Yeah, the difference.
And what kind of difference, even in a couple of years.
But Sarah's exactly right. If people aren't paying their bills intentionally, the people who are paying their bills are paying a higher rate.
Paying more, exactly. I would also be interested in utilizing any of those options with CBK to eliminate additional fees on top of, because that's how you kind of spiral in poverty, you know? So anything we can do to work with people would be good in my eyes, but. Additional questions or a motion on this item?
No, this is very, very hard for me to do this and get another burden of people that can't afford the water bill. But on the other side, I'm a commissioner and I look out for the city, so. Yeah.
Well, I, I'm not, I wouldn't say, the term I'm, is not concerned. That's not the wrong term. I'm more wary of the people that can afford to pay it that choose not to.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of sympathy for people in that position. And I don't think, you know, there are people that can't afford it, that need it, that need to have a little bit of a helping hand.
Right.
But there are people, I'm sure, that just duck out on paying it.
Sure.
There's a lot of programs out there too that help those people. That, I mean, I've used a church before. There's a lot of really good resources in our community. We have a community that has a lot of resources, so. But we also need to make sure that we recover some of these lost funds, so. Motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter Two Administration of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas to allow for the assessment of collection costs and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please. Thank you, Angela.
Item seven A, consider Woody Seat Avenue B access study.
Here it is.
On June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the city entered into an agreement with WSP USA to begin design of the Woody Seat Phase Two project. Within that agreement was an access study at the Avenue B and Woody Seat Exchange. The study includes, included a public meeting and where we talked about three different options that were available, well, that were going to be studied at that location. To talk about that today is Tyler Voeth with WSP.
Well, good morning, council. Thank you very much for letting me come present to you today. As Jeff said, my name is Tyler Voeth. I'm with WSP. I'm the project manager for this project. And a little bit about me is I grew up in Inman, Kansas, here, just up the road. Spent two years here at Hutch Juco before I moved on for college education. So Hutchinson has always held a very special place in my heart here, so. And even further more personal, my dad worked at Morton Salt for forty years, so he drove Woody Seat every day, every one of those days, so. When we were awarded this project, I was really excited to get working on this and see what I can do to help. And WSP is the lead consultant, but I feel like we put together a really strong team to work on this project for you. We have JEO who's going to help us out. They're helping with some of the traffic stuff and the drainage. And then TerraCon has already done their work with some subsurface exploration and looking at pavement thicknesses out there. So just a brief history on this project a little bit. So back in two thousand nineteen, WSP was selected by KDOT to perform a Traffic Engineering Assistance Program Study. I'll call it a TEEP study for short. It looked at a lot of different factors with this area, but the main recommendation coming out of it was to start lowering Woody Seat at the north end of the Avenue C Bridge and then connect to a proposed roundabout at Avenue A. This roundabout would replace all of the ramps at that current interchange, really improve the safety at that end of Woody Seat. Another added benefit to this for the city of Hutchinson would be the removal of the Avenue A and Avenue B bridges. So take a lot of maintenance and inspection costs off the plate for the city. So at that time, or earlier this year, the engineering department came out with a request for qualification about this project. And as part of that, they took that to some open houses. At those open houses, the local residents were rather concerned about what would happen to their neighborhood if Avenue B was closed. It was, you know, that's a very tight-knit neighborhood and that, you know, they worried what would happen if it was severed in half. So engineering staff kind of circled back, added this Avenue B access study to the qualifications. We proposed on that also and were hired to design it and perform this access study. So this is just a quick overview of the area. The yellow circle there on the middle is the intersection of Avenue B and Woody Seat. That's kind of the main focus we're looking at here. The areas highlighted in red are what we call major traffic generators. So these are what's causing the traffic to come into and out of this neighborhood and using Avenue B. You have Coon Kraus there on the left, Avenue A School, the Arcad Station, Dollar General. So this kind of helped orient you there on what we're looking at here. So one of the first things we did with this project is we sat down with the engineering staff and kind of came up with three options for maintaining access on Avenue B. The first one would be closing Avenue B completely, but constructing pedestrian access down to Avenue C and back. The second option would be pedestrian access only under Woody Seat via a structure. And then the third option is a vehicle and pedestrian access at Avenue B, once again, either with a bridge or a structure under Woody Seat. So the next step in the meeting was to go back out to the public to see what their thoughts on this project, to look at our options. That meeting was held on August eleventh at Avenue A School. We provided a couple of displays to look at. One was the concept of what the Woody Seat roundabout would look like. We had an aerial of the southwest Bricktown neighborhood. We found those worked very well. People can really vigilite it better. You know, I live right here, you know, I go to work here. How does this affect me? Got a lot of good comments on that. And then finally, we had preliminary concepts of each of these three options that we showed people and were able to talk from. Met with a lot of local residents, business representatives, city staff. It was a great meeting. They were there and we were setting up and they were still there when we were taken down, so. Got a lot of great feedback from people. Three top things we learned was that, excuse me, option number three with full access was the most popular choice. Lot of talk about how sidewalks were very important to this neighborhood. Teachers and students from Avenue A, when it's nice out, they'll walk down to the parks along Main Street. People accessing the Arcad Station or Dollar General. So several people made that very clear to me how important these sidewalks were down here. And then the last thing was that there was quite a bit of excitement about the green space that will be opened up with this Woody Seat project once the ramps are gone. This is a picture of our open house meeting there. You can see the picture on the left is kind of the concept that we had for the roundabout and the green shows all the open area that will be opened up for development or park space when this project's done. So the next step after the open house meeting was we needed to find out how many people are using Avenue B. So in late September, our partner JEO set up cameras out there to count the traffic and pedestrians. So the day that we counted, there were four hundred and sixty cars using that opening. The peak, the highest we had in one hour was seventy-one vehicles there in the afternoon, people coming home from work. And there were eleven pedestrians counted using that. So it's not great big numbers, but we still, it's something that needs to be addressed with this project. So we'll jump into the study findings we have here. So option one, once again, is complete closure at Avenue B with access via Avenue C. So this would construct sidewalks along both sides of Woody Seat, south to Avenue C where they would use the existing bridge opening to turn around and come back up to Avenue B. There's no structure here, so it's the least expensive option. And we still get the benefit of removing Avenue B Bridge. Some of the downsides is it does require a one-block detour for people walking or biking. And we would also need to do some improvements at Avenue C. The guardrail down there has seen better days. Would need to replace that. Just need to clean things up down there to make it a little bit safer place for people crossing. This is a little concept that we put together to show this. You can see that we need to do a little bit of work at Avenue B to tie into those, the alleyways on the east side and get people room to turn around on the west side. But then you can see the gray sidewalks coming down alongside of Woody Seat. The guardrail, we need to rebuild. The thick yellow line there is, we believe that we're going to need some retaining walls along there. The side slopes of Woody Seat get a little bit wide there and there is a gravel drive on the west side that we don't want to push that sidewalk out into. So that's why we're showing, we probably need some kind of retaining wall to narrow things up there. Option number two, this would be pedestrian access only. The bottom of the screen there, you can see kind of something my team put together, which, that shows this, this structure underneath Woody Seat. The one we're looking at here is twelve foot wide by ten foot tall. And at twelve foot wide, it does not need to go on the National Bridge inventory. So it, there's not the requirements for inspection and stuff, so we can still say we're removing a bridge at Avenue B with this. Also at twelve foot wide, there's plenty of room for two bicycles to pass each other in there. Should have no problems at all. So, you know, this access would provide the same pedestrian access as the current configurations. But with a structure here, it is more expensive. And something that came up at the open house that was discussed is, you know, people were concerned that, you know, you have a dark tunnel here. It's going to draw the wrong kind of people down here camping out. I think we have a very easy solution to that would be, we would light it up. Lights all along through it, work with Evergy to put streetlights at both ends of it. I truly believe if, you know, somebody's down there, they're not going to win all that light down there, so they're going to find somewhere else to go. So now is the big one. Option three, vehicle and pedestrian access at Avenue B. Option three, vehicle and pedestrian access at Avenue B. So this structure here is thirty-eight feet wide. That would allow for two lanes of traffic and then barrier curbs and sidewalks on each side. As I said, this was the most popular one in the open house, but it comes with a lot of engineering issues. The first one is the height of that structure. KDOT requirements say that we have to have fifteen feet, four inches for this to be a bridge. But as I said, you know, we're starting at Avenue C and coming down. So to get that fifteen feet, four inches, we would have to shift that structure as far to the south as we could go. And then we're still going to have to lower Avenue B three to four feet. And that's what really causes the issues. You lower the road that much, the existing stormwater sewer out there doesn't have anywhere to, it's too shallow. So we're going to have to put in a pump station there to collect the water, pump it up and back down that existing system. Lowering the road that much is going to impact city utilities that would need to be relocated. And also it requires a lot more pavement removal and replacement on Avenue B to shift traffic over and get it lowered. So we started looking at cost for this one and we quickly passed two and a half million dollars for this option. We briefly looked at maintenance costs for this, for cleaning it up, maintaining the pump station, and those were running between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars per year for this option. So we had a meeting with city staff at a preliminary draft of this study. We talked about it. And with these costs and the liability, if something would happen, if that would flood and somebody would have an accident there, we decided this, this option wasn't feasible. So we kind of moved forward with just options one and two on this. So we looked at several different costs for this project. This table here shows construction costs. So with option one, you have some work on Avenue B and then construction of the sidewalks south to Avenue C and some improvements at Woody, or excuse me, at Avenue C. Today's cost construction, we estimated that to be about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Option two, with the same improvements on Avenue B, construction of the new pedestrian structure and some amenities to keep traffic out of it and protect pedestrians, look at about six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. As part of this, we started looking at maintenance costs for these two options. And they just, they didn't really go anywhere. Option one, there'd be a lot of mowing and stuff, but the city already does that, so there's not much more cost there. For option two, there's some lights to replace, some cleaning up and to do, but, you know, we were looking at maintenance costs of one or two thousand dollars a year. So we didn't go too much deeper into that.
Tyler, real quick, just to clarify, that's not total construction cost?
No, that is, yes, thank you. This, this is just for maintaining access at Avenue B for the two options. So the, we haven't started looking at cost for the Woody Seat project yet.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yes.
Put another zero on those.
So, thank you, Brad. So the last costs we looked at were future replacement costs. So if you put something in, eventually you're going to have to replace it. So at the end of its design service life, so at the option one column there, today's cost, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We estimated the design life of that option one to be about twenty years. It doesn't sound that long, but sidewalks gets driven on, it gets cracked up. If you're mowing behind a retaining wall, it could buckle. Guard rails get hit all the time. So, you know, that's twenty years, little conservative there. So then the future replacement cost, assume two percent inflation per year, you're looking at three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Option two, you have the more expensive, you know, option there, but with the, the structure we're going to design for you, you can easily get fifty years out of that. So, you know, that future replacement cost gets pretty high there, but you're really looking out quite a ways into future on that. And then the last row on that column is just, you know, that future replacement cost divided by the design service life. Before I wrap up here, I wanted to talk timing a little bit of our project. You know, we turned these, the study in and the concept plans in October. The next part of our contract would be fill check plans, which is about fifty, sixty percent complete. And that's in April of twenty-three. We turned that around to office check plans, which are ninety percent complete in August and then final plans in November. As an engineer, that scares me, that's rather quick, but, you know, we can do it. We know how important this project is. But I tell you that to, you know, if we have delays upfront, it's, we're going to start getting pushed back on the end. We, you know, we don't have any float time in that design schedule. So before I wrap up here, I guess I wanted to say, you know, congratulations to City Hutchinson on the successful cost share grant application. I know engineering staff worked very hard on that for a couple of years. Really glad to hear you guys got that. Looking forward to it and I would stand for any questions you have.
Questions from the council?
Brad, how long is the underpass from, from east, or from east to west? How long?
How long would that tunnel structure be?
Right.
Hundred and eighty feet, hundred, hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty, in that range.
Lighting inside of that?
Yes, lighting inside of it, you know, make sure it's vandal proof, you know, but yeah, we'd put good lighting in it to make sure it's lit very well throughout.
That's what we need to do at Avenue A.
Well, obviously, I don't think this is the answer that we all wanted down in that area, but I have many concerns with a four foot drop underneath a bridge. Mainly, mainly the liability and the ongoing maintenance costs. I mean, we have enough stuff that we take care of in this city. You know, I feel like I've done all I can do. I hope, I hope that the folks, that we can all understand down in there that, that we try to leave that open. I don't know where my council cohorts are at on this, but I, I think that, I, I really think that we need to go with option two. I think that, that hopefully we will get a connectivity grant or two, or one, or a cost share or something. I know that, that I've been told that the state likes these kinds of things. We do have a school right there in the area. There, I mean, connectivity is the most important thing that, that everybody felt concerned about. I am also very concerned about C Street. That road, hopefully as a part of this project, that road will be fixed as well. And I don't know, you know, I don't expect assurances that that will happen, but, but I will, as long as I'm sitting here, I want this whole area to become better and, and this will be a step in the right direction. That's where I'm at on it.
I'm, well, for me, I've studied this so much, but I, I actually get worried about having a tunnel down there. I, I, and I know it's not going to be a popular opinion with people in that area, but I would go with option one and I would spend more money on Avenue C, making that road better and having sidewalks and focusing on the green space and taking some of the, because I look at it as we can spend a lot of money on that. But people will get used to routing one block. We're not having people route like three blocks, five blocks, having, adding fifteen minutes to their drive. I mean, you're adding like two, three minutes. I think if we took the money and spent it on sidewalks, Avenue C improvements and green space, that in the end, having that retaining wall, as long as we don't cut the costs at the end of the project and we fully do what needs to be done to the beautification of that area, I think option one's the best. But I would say, don't not cut costs at the end of the project. Make sure that if you're going to go with option one, that you do the improvements to the sidewalks, to the green space and to repairing and maybe broadening or whatever needs to be done to Avenue C. That's the best thing in that particular area from my point of view. But I'm only one point of view.
And I will say, like, just on a higher level, we have looked at if we had the money from, instead of the tunnel, what, how far could that money go? And so that is, we're doing kind of a higher level look at that is how much would it cost to kind of slide C over and really free up that space so you're not having to use a guard rail to get cars around pedestrians and they can walk freely? Looking at the green space and what kind of options may be available coming up. I know that there were some other things that were looked at on that. You know, sidewalks in the entire, like connecting the entire neighborhood with sidewalks everywhere, there's enough right of way. So we did do, we are starting to do, we're doing some higher level because we just, it's a time thing, but it is just trying to find out what, what was, you know, if it comes down to it, where is our money best spent? So.
Yeah. And even if you got to add a little bit more money to do more sidewalks, I'm not going to get mad at that. I just think logistically and safety wise, I think option one is the best and I would like to see more investment in that area for sidewalks and roads and getting all of that done. So for me, I would like to stretch some of the money from that into the sidewalks, but even if we, my main concern is I think safety wise and the convenience, option one honestly is the best option. I know it's not a popular opinion, but after we've been reviewing this for two years and I've been here for the whole, probably more than that, but it's been a real tough looking at in two years. I think the neighborhood would be served better, making it safer. But like I said, it's only going to happen if you don't cut costs at the end of the project. So the future council members or whatever, do not cut the costs when it comes down to it to save money. Do it right.
Without having pass-through traffic for vehicles, I think I'm just kind of against having a pedestrian tunnel. I'm not, I'm on the fence. I don't really like the option of people walking down C just because of the railroad passing through there. I think with kids, it's an invitation for trouble. But I also think the tunnel's an invitation for trouble also. Thinking about this over the last year, I kind of thought about what were the decision makers doing sixty years ago, sixty-five years ago when they were deciding this? And I'd like to think that we were taking a lot more factors into consideration this time around than what happened sixty-some years ago. And I know full well that we're going to be scrutinized and ridiculed no matter what decision we make. So I think I'm for option one personally at this stage.
At this stage. Garza?
This is very hard for me. First thing I want to know is, this is, this study you guys did, when did you do this? Is the study, you knocked option C out and option three?
We carried it clear through up into our draft and we had construction costs and maintenance costs figured. It just, it got unwieldy. I mean, it's, kind of what sealed it for me too was the liability, you know? Stormwater pump stations are notoriously finicky. You get trash in there, clog stuff up, that floods, somebody drives into it, you know, I, as an engineer, that weighs heavily on me. So, you know, it, we, we had it, concepts and costs built up, up to the draft and the draft was ninety, ninety-five percent complete. So.
Well, we started this project because the people didn't have a say and thank God we gave them a say a little bit. If we go to option one, we didn't, but people didn't get nowhere, in my opinion. Option two is probably the closest to what, to the people with the, going through the pedestrian walk. Those people live down there, they have a great say in what they want. They went, went to the meetings and they told you they wanted option three, which bucked at because of the inability. I understand that as a council member. But I also want to, I understand that the people have says. This is not say by the council, this is not people, by the councils, people for the people. And the people went and they went to these studies, I was there, and they all wanted to do option three. They stood up and said, we want option three. For the responsibility that we have of being the city, it's too much responsibility. And I didn't realize that till right now. I understand that. From my point of view, they got one thing out of this whole half year that we had to give it to them. If I was going to do something, well, I do have a say, I'm on this council. I want to go with option two, at least we give them something. And people sitting here say, it's the, this is, this is, this is taxpayers' town. They pay taxes here, they should have a say. The only thing we're going to give them to them, and after all this stuff that we did, they get, they get a walk-through pedestrian walk. I used to live down here, my grandparents were down there. I understand where they come from. They don't want B shut off. So as far as the options go, I'm going to go with option two. That's, and option two is not really my favorite. I understand, I did, I was not real happy on not letting us know, at least I didn't know that you guys kicked out option three. I would not till I sat here on this seat, that known that you would have kicked out option three. When did that happen? I don't know. As us sitting on this seat, we got a lot of questions to answer to people. When we get, when we leave here and we get home, we're going to have a lot of phone calls. Mr. Garza, when did you know about option three? I didn't know about option three getting kicked out. It was not to my knowledge. And we get answered to the people. The people had all these questions and I went to all your, all of good, you guys gave a good thing there when I went there. But as also as me being a commissioner here, I have responsibilities of the city. And the city's liability, I don't think we can take that liability with the pump station and so forth. I used to be electrician for the city, I know the pump stations overfill and everything like that. We have to give them something. They, regardless, we, we've always ran this city, it was what government wanted to do. For once, we're starting to get around, we're listening to the people. We have a good council here, don't get me wrong. I think we all have good council members here. They went to the, to the assembly that we had and listened to everybody. But in the end, it's up to us five people here. And me sitting as a council member, I have to take responsibility into, excuse me, into factor. And I think the factor of the overflow and some pumps and stuff like that, I have to take to that we can't deal with that big a responsibility. So like I said, this is people of the people, not the council for the people. It is council for the people, it's not, but it's people for the people that do, that will vote us in. So I'm here to say, I'm very disappointed that we couldn't do option three, but the liability came too much. That's what I'm telling you, being a council member, we have a lot of responsibility. Okay? And I like to see us go to option two. At least they got something out of it. We didn't waste our time, the people didn't waste their time going to those meetings. We go to option one, we didn't get nothing done.
I think there's more improvements to sidewalks and accessibility to C Avenue that has been looked at through this. There's definitely been some changes with.
But the biggest change, the biggest change that they wanted was access.
I, I understand that.
All right? The biggest change that they wanted was access. Now, the only thing we can give them is a pedestrian access. We're not going to be able to give them cars to go on the other side of B Street. The reason why we say that is because we don't have to go around the C Street where we live.
I have.
I pick up my daughter every day at Avenue A.
Okay. I have a real concern with pedestrians on C Street. I don't know how, you know, I was told.
Can we go back to that slide?
Yeah, sure. I was told that, you know, the railroad's too close, we can't get the road closer to the railroad. I mean, I don't know if you dig back to get, I, I guess none of that matters to me and, I mean, that matters to me. That's why, one of the reasons I'm for a pedestrian underpass, because I don't feel like Avenue C.
There's a lot of clearance.
What?
I was saying, I think there's a lot of clearance there with the way that they're doing it from the railroad track.
There's certainly not now and there's a railroad track there and we're going to have more traffic there for sure. And Steve, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think you should be worried about when somebody knew or when somebody didn't know. We hired this engineering firm to do this study. They did the study and either we choose to believe it or, or we don't. And, and I want to give the folks down there something. And, and I want to give the folks down there something that they wanted and that is, they want a connectivity.
Well, I disagree with you, counsel, because they, the people should know everything that goes on in our decisions. But that's between, that's a difference of opinion.
No, I'm just saying, I don't know when we decided that number three was off the table either. I, I, I agree with that. I mean, when, when you're starting to run into these liability issues and moving utilities, that's, that's going to be very cost prohibitive. You know, I, I know whatever we do down there is going to be an improvement, so if, if I get outvoted, so be it. But this is what I've heard over and over and Jade, I guess it's up to you.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a comment, sorry Jade.
Go ahead.
So the, the tunnel access, I'm all for in regards to drive, if it was feasible for people to drive and pedestrian traffic on Avenue B. But also talking in conversations, there are, there are some negative connotations to having a pedestrian tunnel and how that feels with division between the two sides of the highway. I'm taking that into account and weighing out the responsibility of our community in general, but also the local community in that neighborhood. And there's a balance there and there's no, it's going to have to be a compromise, there's no solution that's going to make absolutely everybody happy.
Right.
Oh, I, I understand that.
And that's, that's why I personally, I think if I can't get vehicle traffic through B, I think I'm better off seeing improvements on C, more so than just sidewalks over the long run and, and saving the community a little bit more money. Which includes everyone in that area too, saving money as well. But either way, I want it to be better than what it is now.
Sure, I understand. Well, that's my opinion. My opinion is to go to option two and we gave them something back. And we are, hopefully we worked, and citizens out there is listening to me, we have a great council. They went to the meetings, they did their jobs and it's a great council. But I can't sit here and just go along with something that I have an opinion against. My opinions go to option two.
My opinion is the same as Richardson. If we can't get the option three, then it's option one. I'm not comfortable with the tunnel.
I guess my comment would be, I'm curious if option B is even an attractive option to the neighborhood. Because I, I am inclined to go with option one and do greater improvements on those side roads, but I also want that neighborhood to feel like their voices were heard and, and if this is a compromise that we can make as a council for not a lot of extra cost, I mean, don't get me wrong, it's a substantial increase in, in construction costs, but I'm more concerned about the long-term maintenance. And if the long-term maintenance isn't extraordinary and it's something that neighborhood wants, I would vote for it. I just don't, I just don't know if that's really what they want. I mean, if they can't get three or C, would they rather just have one? Or is it, is it a viable compromise? That's what I'd like to know. Were there strong feelings in favor of a pedestrian only tunnel?
I have heard over and over, we want some sort of connectivity on B Street. It's close to the school, it's a block away from the school, it's, it's used all the time. That's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm basing my decision on. I've heard over and over connectivity, so.
In the meetings, when they explicitly said option C, is it, would option B be their last choice or would option A be their last choice?
Unfairness, I would think that they didn't know the liabilities of a pump. These guys did a great job, when they went back to the table, they just said, showed the pictures what they can, might be able to do. But when they went back and studied, they realized option three, in my personal opinion, that like they said, that the water's going to be high, the pumps are going to overflow, could, could overflow. So that, your residents didn't know about the, they had to put pumps and stuff like that. Now, if we had all that information there to tell them that the option three would be, could have liability of the pumps, maybe the people would have different options of that. So I don't know, that's.
Did they like option B?
No, they all option C, what I heard.
Okay.
I don't know. I certainly don't want to cram something down the neighborhood's throat that they don't want. But I, again, I'm basing it on connectivity on B Street in some way, shape or form. That's where I'm at. I don't know.
What did you, Jeff, what are your thoughts?
I have talked to a couple of different people in the region, going out to eat and whatever, but I, I do get about a 50/50 mix of concern and support. Some people were really worried about what it may implicate inside of their neighborhood and near their houses, especially there's already some activity near there that.
Yeah, I'm sure there are, under, under the underpass.
So when you add a potential tunnel right next to the same activity, there's some concern and then there's some people that just really want the access for walking. So it's not, there's not a clear delineated line on that in my conversations.
It's like a fruitcake.
The split on the councils is probably representative of the people in that area too.
I was, I was a little disappointed in the data showing only 11 bicyclists and pedestrians, but also recognize it was late September, it's not summertime. As far as connectivity goes, either going up to Avenue A or Avenue C is a block out of the way unless your destination is on B. If you're going to Avenue A splash pad, you're going to be getting on Avenue A at some point in time anyway. It's, it's the difference being you're walking in an area where there's no vehicular traffic if you have a tunnel at B versus walking in an area that you have vehicular traffic on the Avenue A solution or on Avenue C, whatever that solution ends up being at the end.
So if we go with option A, we can be assured that those improvements on side streets are going to be made. They are not going to be.
Cut.
So I talked with Gary about this, um, we were able to get the cost share grant. So with that, it is going to free up some ARPA money. So we can actually, that I believe has to be designated by the end of 24.
It has to be encumbered and then used by 26, I believe.
And so which would be within the scope of the, or the timeframe of this project so that funding could be encumbered or right now by the end of 24 or whatever with that designation of the ARPA money that we just freed up from receiving the cost share grant.
So we can encumber that immediately and if there is any change in leadership, they would still be assured.
It would still, yeah, it still has to go through, you can't.
The last thing I want to say, Mayor, is this, you, to me, you're missing the whole thing. In that area, a lot of uncles, aunts, grandmas and grandpas. Now, you're asking, if you don't give them the pedestrian at least, you're asking the people to go clear around to go to an aunt's house, to an uncle's house. That's the human part of it. That's all I'm saying, that's the human part of it.
Well, Steve, I'm saying the human part of it is that 50% want of it and 50% think it's going to be a detriment to their community. So that's where I'm struggling.
I understand.
I, I want, I don't want to give them the gift that nobody wants. You know what I mean? Especially at a higher cost to the city. I mean, that seems like the height of like.
The cost is one thing. We do a lot of stuff on the north side that costs millions of dollars. We don't look at cost there sometimes. So we have to be fair. The cost key's coming and I know it's a bigger cost, but you have to look at the risk. The risk of number three right now, it's made my decision, I can't do three because it's too much floods and all that.
And I just want to clarify, Steve, I don't mind that it costs more because the long-term maintenance costs are, are not great. But what I mind is approving something, a compromise that that neighborhood doesn't want at a higher cost. You know, I don't mind that it costs more if that's what they really want, I just don't have a feel that that's what they really want.
I think there might be nefarious activity that it could bring into that neighborhood.
I don't think anyone would disagree that Avenue C is very wanting for improvements. I don't think there's any doubt on that. And that's going to happen, I think with either option.
That, I would agree with that. It's going to happen either way. And I think Jade, you've been on this council long enough, you've heard about the Woody Sea and all of this for a long time. I'm not sure how you could characterize not knowing what the people want down there. And I, I will say, they want improvements down there.
I don't, I don't think they all want a bridge. I don't think they all want a pedestrian bridge. Would you, I mean, do you love the, do you love the bridge and what happens in Avenue A? You live right down, down there. Do you think that that is welcome, a welcome addition to that neighborhood?
The Avenue, is it currently set?
I mean, the people camping underneath it.
Well, no.
So that, that's what I'm worried about. So I, I, I mean, when I say I don't know what they want, we know what they want. They want full mobility through that, both vehicular and pedestrian and, and that's not a viable option, plus we want to take a bridge out of inventory. So that's not a viable option. So, I mean, I'm fine with, if somebody wants to make a motion, I'll, you know.
All right. Motion to approve option one, no access at Avenue B, allowing the project design to move forward.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
No.
Fast?
No.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hirosde Carvalho?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Okay, we'll start with you, Sarah.
I don't have anything to report this morning. What about you, Charlie?
Chili cookoff is this Saturday, so downtown, first Saturday in November.
What time does it start?
Soon as you smell stuff. I think, I think it's 10 o'clock, I'm not sure.
Never too early, never too early to eat chili.
I'm there.
Okay, what about you, Greg?
I don't think I have anything except tonight, good news, we're going to be moving forward with the future of our city, hopefully in a positive direction. I'm excited about that. What else?
How many applications did we have?
We had about 45, I think. Anyway, I, I don't think I have anything else. Let me, let me address one more thing. For those of you that live and work downtown, we are addressing some of our homeless issues. It is a very slow process as government usually is, is what I'm learning. But we are making strides and as you say, John, we, we may have some sort of actionable plan. So at least one step at a time. I just want that on the record and thank you, Chief, for your work there.
Okay, what do you have, Garza?
First of all, I want to say to the council, they had a good job, they, we negotiated, we went and did everything we possibly can. Thank you for being there for the South End Town and it didn't come out the way I like it, but you do have a good council here. Okay, and that being said, the youth council, you know how I am with youth. So we had, we got, finally we got the candidates on December 3rd at the Justin Theater at the Juco, we're going to have the elections. All the kids will be invited in Hudson, Kansas, from the high schools all the way up to junior high, they will come in there and place their ballots December 3rd. The kids, the youngsters will get up there on the stage and they will, we will ask them, we have five member board that will ask them questions and they will answer the questions to the best of their ability. And I'm going to tell you something, I went through all these applications and the applications are tremendously, we got some smart kids in this town. And they had answers for us, for me, for answers for the city, homelessness and everything. So they had, they're very, very intelligent kids. So December 3rd at 5 o'clock at the Justin Center and Juco, I really don't know where the Justin Center is, but we'll get more information out to you, the Justin Center. And all the kids, I hope all the kids in junior highs and the high schools come out and listen to their candidates and get these youth council voted in. So that happens on December 3rd at 5 o'clock at the Justin Center. Also the neighborhood.
Hey Steve, real quick, I had that on the second, that Friday, was it moved to the Saturday?
December 3rd?
Mm-hmm.
Um, man, there's been so many movements, I, I, I don't, maybe could have, but it is December 3rd, I can know that. All right. I'd like for all the parents to come out, please support these young kids. I mean, they're excited, they're going to have a say, a little bit of say in their youth, they're our future, let's get with them, get them a youth council and support them. Because I've always, I, I always had, think the youth are our future, we got to, we got to help them out, all right? Let's get them interested in government, okay? The north, northeast side neighborhood meeting, we've had three of them so far, we're to the point, we have our boundary set up and then November 15th, we're going to have another meeting at, at the Zone, the Zone is 50805 East B in the back of the school, it's used to be the school, go in the back there and go in there, we're going to start working on the name for our new neighborhood on Southeast District, we're going to start naming our, that's the next thing we have to do. So everybody come out, listen to what's going on. I've had a lot of people come to this meeting and I told them, if you want this, support me, get over there. So they're doing it, all right? Huts High Football, I watch football go out there if I don't have nobody playing. So they're a great football team, they're going, they're going to go to the second view of the championship this Friday. Let's get out there and support our Huts High Football Team, they're great. Man, we beat them 37 to 7 last week, so I'm not bragging, but I am, okay? They're great. So come out there and support Huts High, they need your support, they're going to play a 7-2 team coming up Friday. My God, I'm talking so much, can't remember the team that they're playing, but they're, go out there and support them, they need those stands full this Friday for the second championship, this is the second half of the championship coming up, so we got to beat them, and we're going to beat them, okay? Other than that, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. I just have a few items. Firstly, wanted to remind everyone to vote, you can vote early up until I think noon on Monday at the courthouse annex. And if you don't make it out early, then elections are on Tuesday, November 8th, that is next Tuesday, sometimes easy to forget in the hustle of your day-to-day life, so really hope everyone can get out and vote. November 12th, I wanted to let everybody know that there is going to be a fun run for the honors, or the Vieira Veterans Honors Foundation at DCI Park at 8:30. So encourage you and your family to go out and support the Vieira Foundation for Veterans. Had a question about November 29th, I had on our calendar that we may be having a joint city-county meeting, wanted to know if that was confirmed or if I should release that hold on my calendar. And the last thing, Greg alluded to our meeting this evening, there was some miscommunication about our city manager recruitment meeting. It is not at 6, I think that's all been set out, but that meeting is at 5:00 PM today here at City Hall. So that's all I had and I'll hand it over to you, Gary.
Good morning, council members, Gary Meeger, interim city manager. With regard to, excuse me, the meeting with the county, I believe we're looking at December the 6th as that, as that meeting, that'll be at noon, it'll be after the council meeting. And with regard to the, to the meeting tonight, we, we originally were looking at 6 o'clock and then I think during a previous council meeting, it was discussed to have it at 5:00. So we did have a little bit of a confusion there, but we've got that, that notice out, so we are meeting at 5:00 tonight here in this, in the room in the back here.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, it'll be first out here, but then adjourning to executive session.
Great, exciting, thank you.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Wow, okay. Anyone have a motion for adjournment?
I would move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hirosde Carvalho?
Yes.